We'll call the commissioners' meeting to order at 10:01. All those who are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a lot of items on the agenda today, but are there any people from the public here to make common items not appearing on today's agenda? All right, since I think most of the audience is former 911 directors or their spouses, we'll move on. Any additions to the agenda? All right, meeting minutes appropriate?
Thanks.
Take a motion then.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meetings held May 21st.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the meetings held on May 21st. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. We'll move on to our proclamations. We just have one today, but it's a very important one. Proclamation number 32 of 2024, recognizing the 30th anniversary of the Center County 911 Emergency Communication Systems in Center County. It just seems like it's been a lot longer than that, but we have Norm and all three of our former 911 directors here. As Steve said, it's the dream team.
There you go.
So why don't you take it away, Norm?
June 1st, 2024 marks our 30th anniversary of Center County 911. The countywide 911 service went live June 1st, 1994. Today, we're fortunate to have all the former 911 directors with us today. I'd like to recognize these former directors for their contributions that helped get us here today, where we are today. First is Elwood Williams. He's here with his wife Ruth Ann. Elwood started working towards a county 911 system with a regional 911 system while serving as police chief at State College Police. Elwood was the original county 911 director, taking a vision of a countywide 911 to reality. This project was not easy, many obstacles and hurdles, but his determination started the countywide system we have today. Part of his projects, he started the 1998 911 addressing project and the 1998 radio project. Elwood worked at Center County from 1993 to 1997. Second is Dan Tanselbach. Dan originally worked as dispatcher at State College Police. Dan was Elwood's assistant director at the start of 1994. Dan became director in 98, served until his retirement in 2014. Dan had many projects during his tenure, the county's addressing project, computer aided dispatch implementation, two major radio projects, and a new dispatch center. Third is Dale Neff. Dale worked at State College Police, Penn State, before joining Center County. Dale served as a dispatcher, midnight supervisor, assistant director, and became director in 2014. Served until his retirement in 2020. Dale also helped with the 2013 radio project, the new dispatch center while working with Dan. Dale implemented our new 2016 computer aided dispatch system, fire and police protocols, negotiated Motorola Service Agreement, building new center hall tower, new microwave system, and we finally accomplished fire and EMS renumbering, which allow room for growth in the future. There are many more projects, each of them were part of, I only highlighted the larger projects. There are constant projects, unexpected tasks, there are equipment issues in 911 daily. There's never a dull moment in the life of a 911 director. Every day is busy, the hours, days, and years go by fast in the 911 world. I've seen tremendous growth in 911 in my 26 years here. Originally, we had no street addresses in our rural communities. We had paper maps with notes like Mr. Smith, Red Barn handwritten on the maps. To today, we have county address with robust computerized GIS maps driven by GIS data. We went from four fire dispatch frequencies and multiple radio bands, which included a lot of interference from other counties and state, and two EMS dispatch frequencies. Today, we have one countywide fire and one countywide EMS, which allows better continuity of field operation. Our trunk radio system has 19 tower sites providing radio coverage to emergency services. 911 wireless call location technology has drastically improved over the years from no location technology to pretty accurate wireless location technology today. Our 911 system was based on an outdated 1960s technology until the 2023 implementation of Pennsylvania Next Gen 911 System. Center County was one of the fastest counties in Pennsylvania to meet Next Gen 911 GIS compliance with our GIS and addressing data, due to the vision of the past leaders to implement structure-based address data back in 1998. We now share phones, 911 network, regional computer aided dispatch with four counties in our Southern Allegheny 911 Cooperative, which continues to save Center County residents money. 911 continues to see technology change rapidly with the changes we see with Internet and wireless technologies daily in today's world. Center County efforts to keep up with technology over the years have positioned us well for the changes we continue to see. Next Gen 911 will bring more technology for us as it continues to develop. We would not made it this far without the help of vendors, consultants, county staff, and then County Emergency Service, EMA, and the Center County GIS team, who always find solutions to make things work for us. The retired staff who contributed so much over the years, the help and guidance we get from the current county administrator, and also the previous administrators. We need to also recognize the Board of Commissioners and the previous boards who have supported 911 over the years. They continue to recognize the importance of 911 in Center County. Thanks to the 911 admin staff who do all the work behind the scenes, the amazing core of dispatchers and supervisors who continue to answer 911 calls for emergencies and dispatch fire and EMS and police every day to our county residents and visitors, even when our staffing levels struggle in this very difficult employment world we see today. In 2023, our dispatch staff processed over 38,000 emergency phone calls, 92,000 non-emergency phone calls, and our center handled over 136,000 incidents involving 89 different agencies. The dispatchers typically handle 200 to 300 incidents a day compared to approximately 100 incidents plus in 1994. Center County 911 is a great place to work. We have the latest technology for staff. It's a nice dispatch center, good benefits, and a great retirement plan. If you're interested in a good professional career, go to the Center County Human Resources website to apply. Center County has always strived for excellence in providing 911 service for residents. Today, we celebrate 30 years of a countywide 911 in Center County. We will have cake and light refreshments in the UOC at 11 o'clock following the commissioners' meeting. But in reality, these guys that worked here before really laid the groundwork for a strong 911 system, and I can't overemphasize that, so.
Well, thanks again, Norm. We'd like to thank the former directors and also like to thank their spouses because it is not a nine-to-five job on your director of 911. Would any of the former directors like to say anything? Anybody? Come on up. Come on up, Dale.
I just want to thank Dan and Elwood for leaving the 911 center in such great condition when I took over. They did the hard work, the setup, the addressing. I can go on and on, but my job was just to keep it running and not running it into the ground. Unfortunately, we had some challenges when I was director, not the least of which was COVID.
Yeah.
And that brought some unbelievable operational challenges, which my people under the headset, the 911 dispatchers and the supervisors, I can't say enough about all the work and how they adapted to change so well and so cheerfully, in quotes. They realized they had to do it, but to a man, to a woman, they all stepped up and got us through that dark time. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Dale. Yes, Elwood and Dan left you a great foundation, but you built it up quite a bit. There were some major investments and improvements in 911 during your tenure. Elwood or Dan, would you like to say anything?
Because I have a question for Elwood.
Oh, all right. Historical question.
Yeah. Thank you for having us today, here today. It's unbelievable that it's 30 years ago that Dan and I set two little offices in the back of the building over there someplace, and the day we arrived, we had a chair. We didn't have a desk, we had a chair. But I'm extremely proud of what's been accomplished over the years. I'm extremely proud of Dan and Dale's work and Norm's continued work, and above all, to thank you, the Board of Commissioners and previous boards of commissioners, for all your support in this endeavor. It was never cheap. It started out expensive, and I'm sure it continues to be very expensive today, but they're only able to keep up with the technology because of your willingness to be able to put the money there to get it done and hire the people, correct people to do it. So thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dale. Thank you.
Before you sit down, Elwood, I do have a question.
You really do.
I really do. You know, I think we take for granted today that we have 911, and we have folks that are staffing headquarters, if you will, for emergency services and to make sure that they dispatch people appropriately and timely. What was it like before 911? What did it look like if I were having an emergency and I lived in Snowshoe or Reiversburg or I was in, you know, some rural part of the county or?
Well, when it started out, basically every fire service within the county had their own telephone number, emergency telephone number that you had to call.
Right.
Seven-digit emergency telephone number you had to call.
And that was?
And even after the first round, as Dan and I put it together, we only had 911 in a part of the area, basically the State College Center Region area, and ultimately picked up some of the closer Belfort and some of the other areas in here with 911, but we still had areas such as Phillipsburg and Snowshoe and Help Me Out, Dan, and that area over there, we're still using a seven-digit number, but it was a common seven-digit number for all the fires and police services over there. So yes, when we started out, every individual fire company in the county, 16 of them?
27.
Okay. See, my memory's slipping. Each had their own seven-digit fire number that you called, and it went into any place from like, what was the lady's name in Phillipsburg who was there for 150 years?
Mrs. Patrione.
Yeah. The lady spent 24/7 sitting in her house waiting for police and fire calls to come to, but that's the way it operated. It was just, so.
And you hoped that somebody picked up the phone when you dialed that seven-digit number?
Yes, yes. But yes, everybody had their own individual fire number for ambulance. Some of the ambulance numbers are the same as the fire company numbers, but even in that case, many of them were different, if I remember. Yeah, yeah. So.
Not quite as reliable as what I'm thinking.
No, no, no. So we've, I say we, we've come a long, 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 long ways, and for my part, that was my, that was my strong right-hand person when we were putting it all together, running around looking for tower sites, dealing with fire companies that say it's not going to work. In fact, I had enough time here that when we switched over to the 800 megahertz system and the county commissioners, again, were a big help in that because they put all the funds out there to buy every fire company new radios. And Dan and I had people that said, well, it ain't going to work. I remember one fire chief in particular, and I'll leave his name out, said, this is never going to, you guys don't know what you're doing. You're crazy. The good Lord was with us. It was about, what, two weeks later or something like that, there was, after the system got cut over and people had had all the training, there was a major fire over in Bald Eagle. I think it was a junkyard, if I remember right.
Oh, boy.
I don't know, there were six or seven or so fire companies there. Fortunately, the chief that was in charge had incident command training. He set everything up, tanker shuttles, this, that, and the other thing, and it worked just absolutely perfect. And I was walking down the main street of Belfort shortly after that happened, and I heard this guy yelling at me, "I owe you an apology. I owe you an apology." And all I gave him was a thumbs up, so. So yes, you've come a long ways, and thank you for your support.
Thanks, Elwood. Great question, Steve. Yeah, people don't tend to remember what it was like before 911. You said 27 different phone numbers to 27 different fire companies and possibly almost as many phone numbers to the various ambulance companies as well.
Well, back in those days, the ambulance companies and the fire companies were pretty much together, and so when you called one, you got the other, so it was a.
Back in the days in Port Matilda, they used to answer them in their houses, and they'd run over to the fire station, write the address or write the location on the board, and then hit the fire siren. That's how they activated.
Yeah.
Wow.
People forget that the fire sirens were how you summoned the troops at that time.
Yeah.
They didn't have other technology.
And no radios.
So a lot of progress over the last 30 years, and we'd like to thank the former directors, the former employees, the current employees, former boards of commissioners, and of course the state legislature for the 911 fee on the phone lines that helps pay for at least a good portion of it.
And that laid groundwork for really counties being able to get started to have a countywide system.
Yep, and so we would like to thank the county 911 staff for dispatching thousands and thousands of fire calls, dispatching thousands of ambulances that probably have saved hundreds of lives and delivered dozens of babies. And if somebody wants to be part of that, please contact our HR department. We've got jobs with good pay, lots of overtime, and great, great benefits.
They teach you how to deliver babies?
Well, over the phone, yeah.
Okay, all right.
We've done it how many times in the past couple of years, Norm? I mean, three, four?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, yeah. So I'll turn over to Commissioner Concepcion for comments and questions.
Yeah, thanks so much for being here today, those of you who have been part of this effort over time. I think it really, what we've heard about today really speaks to kind of technical expertise and keeping up with the latest technology that has gone into making our system so much more responsive and more accurate for citizens in Center County. And that, you know, that's something that saves lives, and the work that you all did to build this system has saved countless lives over the past 30 years by having this integrated system and continuing to move the technology forward so that we're able to be so much more accurate and so much more efficient and reaching people who are in crisis. And I think most people who live here happily are kind of able to take for granted that there's help at the other end when they call 911, and that's the result of, you know, the work that you all have done to make sure that we have a system that works. So thank you all.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
It's 24/7. I don't know, I don't know any other job that literally you, there's got to be somebody on duty on point 24/7, and it's phenomenal to me to think that in 30 years, how far we've come. I think Elwood highlighted it quite well. Back in the, in the previous age, everything was just sort of catch and, you know, if you got lucky, you got service. If you didn't, you didn't, and you know, the addressing was hit and miss. Everything was hit and miss, but I think over the course of 30 years, whether, you know, Dan, Dale, Norm, Elwood, you've put a program together that has saved countless lives and really improved the quality of everybody's sleep. Because I can't imagine living in an area that did not have this level of service, and maybe we do take it for granted, but that's not without a lot of sweat and heartache. And I've been here for a little bit of that, and I know I've probably given you guys some heartache, but we've all worked together to make sure that this program is what it is today, and we can all be proud of your service and the service of all the folks that came before us and will come after, because this is an ongoing, literally an ongoing story. Because what we think is cutting-edge today, probably 30 years, maybe even 20 years in the future, it'll look like, it'll look like the Stone Age. So this is our opportunity to just keep the, keep the ball rolling and keep things in a very positive light, but the groundwork and the, really the base of what we have belongs to the folks that are in this room this morning, so thank you very much.
Thanks again. Gary, do you have any questions?
No, I, it's good to see so many people again, but I tore mine in a mill for 30 years.
Oh, all right. Okay.
You should walk into my office and stick a mic in front of you and say, I'd like to comment on that, please.
Oh, man.
He's a great guy.
Yeah? All right, well, unless there's anything else, I think we could take a motion and then bring everybody up front for photos.
Then I'll move to adopt proclamation 32 of 2024, recognizing the 30th anniversary of the Center County 911 Emergency Communication System in Center County.
And I will second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt proclamation number 32, recognizing the 30th anniversary of Center County 911 Emergency Communication Systems in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.
I do have one thing, though. I really want to see the look on Elwood's face when he goes down and sees what the 911 system has turned into, since you were sitting just across the hallway here in a lonely chair, and to see what it's, what it's morphed into over 30 years. I think you're going to be very pleasantly surprised how. Looking forward to talking to you after you've seen it.
Well, we'll be, we'll be down there shortly after 11 and help celebrate. But why don't we bring everybody up, and that's spouses included, if you'd like.
Yeah, bring the spouses up there. They're the, that's the team.
Yes.
They got a bank of computers down there that will swell your head.
Yeah.
That's great. It's amazing, the technology.
Let's put that somewhere near the middle.
Get this out of the way here.
Do we need to shift this way a tiny bit?
Fucking a little tighter there.
Yeah, just a little bit.
Air off.
Yeah, whoa, whoa. Our best side. Three, two, five, six, seven, eight, oh, should I have said three, two, nine, one, one?
There you go. Well, thank you all. Good to see you, Dan.
Thank you.
A pleasure.
To Norm. Give it to Norm.
You can hang it on the wall down there.
Thank you very much for having me.
Elwood, thank you, indeed. Looking forward to talking to you after you see that down there.
Okay.
You know, when you have to have a refrigerant system just for your, an HVAC system just for your computer banks, you've got a lot of, a lot of servers attached down there.
As the spouse, good, thank you.
Good job.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks.
We'll see you in a few minutes.
Yeah. Anything else for us, Norm?
No, I'm just wondering about the tree trimming next.
Ah, all right. So I believe, let me look here. I believe if you and Jonathan want to hail that jointly, that's fine. Yeah, I've got, I've got Jonathan down, but let's have Norm and Jonathan talk about the Center County Tree Trimming Services at various county-operated facilities, request for proposal, which includes a lot of 911 towers and systems.
Yes, it does.
Yeah, we identified four tower sites that need tree trimming done, Pine Glen, Howard, Port Matilda, and the Willow Bank Building out back here. So we went out for RFP with the help of Jonathan, put it together, and we got the vendors back. Pretty good turnout.
We had two vendors meet the requirements of the RFP, which were Cutting Edge Tree Services and Parsons Tree Services. So we will then be proceeding into contract negotiations next week.
Great, and we appreciate everyone who bid on the project, and good to see we received two complete packages of the five proposals. Commissioner Concepcion, questions?
Yeah, just a quick question. Does this fall under professional services, or is it more, is it a more traditional RFP kind of process?
We handle it as a traditional RFP.
Okay.
Commissioner Dershowitz, any questions?
I'm good to go. I see, I recognize the names. I think it's very reputable folks.
Good. All right, well, unless there's any other questions, any questions from Gary? No? Take a motion then.
I'll move to enter into contract review for the Center County Tree Trimming Services RFP.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to enter into the contract review for the Center County Tree Trimming Services, request for proposals. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great. Thanks again, Jonathan. Thanks again, Norm. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, then we will move on to contracts and authorizations, and Jonathan has a capital project for us.
I'm looking to add an exhaust fan at the Center County Correctional Facility. This will be used for welding, metal cutting, et cetera, in our shop. We received a proposal from MGM Mechanical for $8,400 for the installation of the fan. So this would then be moved to next week's consent agenda.
All right. Any questions, Commissioner Dershowitz? Commissioner Dershowitz? All right.
I'll move to add the contract with MGM Mechanical, Inc., to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with MGM Mechanical to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks again, Jonathan.
Thank you.
And now we have Ray, our director of planning, with yet another large grant to help improve the quality of life in Center County.
You're correct, Commissioner Higgins. It is a larger-than-normal RACP program grant for the CPI Health Sciences Building. The proposed project's a 35,275-square-foot educational facility to be adjacent to the existing institute. This will contain academic space, medical library, classrooms, administrative space, and a 9,000-square-foot suite for local health care providers. The cost share is outlined in RDA Forms 300 and 301, which is being requested to be executed for the next scheduled exit call with Tetra Tech, who is the Office of Budget Consultant, and Delta Development, who is the CPI consultant on the RACP. The total project cost is $15,103,701, and CPI's match consists of $11,103,701 from federal funds, from the USDA Community Facilities Loan, EDA funds, and Health Resources and Service Administration. There is an unrelated match of $410,000 with the Commonwealth Financing Authority Multimodal Transportation Grant. So this is multifaceted funding for this particular project of the educational facility that will be added to this institute.
Well, thank you, Ray. Yes, this is a major project from the Central Pennsylvania Institute of Science and Technology, which we abbreviate as CPI. Their Health Sciences Building will go a long way toward building Their Health Sciences Building will go a long way toward building the workforce here in Center County to deliver the medical care needed at our hospitals, plural, doctors' offices, multi-plural, and our many retirement communities throughout the region. So commissioners are very happy to support this project and develop the workforce here in Center County. Commissioner Concepcion, comments or questions?
Yeah, just building on what Commissioner Higgins said, these are some of the kinds of jobs that are most critically needed here in our area, I think throughout Pennsylvania, in terms of having the folks have the critical training they need to do these kind of jobs in the health professions. And I think when we've talked to some of the folks in the Geisinger and Mount Nittany Systems, one of the things they've expressed is their need for people who are trained in exactly these kind of professions and the shortages that they've been experiencing. So this would be a good step forward.
Wonderful. Commissioner Dershowitz?
Well, I think one of the important elements of this is the fact that we can't help every RACP program do all the work. But I think this is a critical piece of what I would consider the future of Center County and working with CPI. That's a win for not only CPI and its students, but also for the community, because we all rely on healthcare and healthcare workers. And this is going to be really a shot in the arm to provide training that we desperately need in our area. So happy to help them out.
This is the beginning of the project. So in consulting with Delta Development, the architect is putting their proposals for bid together, and they're expecting possible startup in September.
Oh, great.
I'd like to give a shout out to the school districts that are involved.
Yeah.
Bald Eagle, Penns Valley, and Bellefonte that have taken the initiative and really, you know, a certain amount of risk in putting a program like this together. But I think it's going to be a huge win for our area, and I think it's going to be a positive for everyone. So wish them all luck.
Wonderful. Any questions, Gary? All right. Unless there's anything else on this important topic, I think we could take a motion.
I will move to approve the RDA forms for the Central Pennsylvania Institute of Science and Technology Health Science Building RACP Grant.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the RDA forms for the CPI Health Sciences Building RACP Grant. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thank you very much. Right, oh, Gary, you have a question?
Is that the current CPI property or the rest?
That's my understanding, yes, adjacent to the existing facility.
I believe it's kind of on the downhill side, close to I-99 was the last location I knew of. All right. And now we also have Cochee from Planning with an extension on the Center County Bridge Replacements Project.
Good morning. Larson Design Group is requesting a 16-month time extension for the agreement L-00529. That's the Center County Bridge Bundle Replacements. That's Mill Street in Howard and Railroad Street in Bellefonte. This is for Part IV, for final design review, construction consultation, and structure design review. They want to extend that from August 18, 2024, to December 18, 2025. The requested time extension will allow adequate time for Larson to complete the work outlined in the agreement as the construction contract is scheduled for October 31 of 2025. That's when the bridges are scheduled to be done. So we're just asking that you approve the 16-month time extension for Larson Design Group.
Great, thank you for bringing this forward, Cochee. And as a member in both of these neighborhoods, the only way in and out of the neighborhood is the bridge. And so they're going to have to build a temporary bridge while they demolish the current one and then build the replacement. So these are very complicated projects, but absolutely crucial to the neighborhoods and citizens and small businesses involved.
Yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
No, sounds good.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
Good to go.
All right.
I'll move to approve the time extension for Larson Design Group.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the time extension for Larson Design Group. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thank you, Cochee. Now we have Beth from Elections. Looks like we have a small grant coming in.
Yes, so we just received information of this last week. So I'm here asking you to consider the acceptance of the 2024 Election Security Grant Program under HAVA in the past and authorize the board to apply for the grant through the Pennsylvania Department Estate. A total of $5,160.23 will be dispersed to Center County to be used towards the support of the 2024 general election. And we'll have until the end of 2025 to spend those monies.
Well, it's great to see there's a little bit of money left over from the Help America Vote Act. Of course, we're happy to take any contributions toward elections. Up until a couple of years ago, it was entirely on the county taxpayer to pay for
Exactly.
those services. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
Yeah, just glad to have this little bit extra. It takes a lot of people to run an election on the scale of a presidential election every four years. So I know something Center County has invested in, some extra staffing this year. And this will help with that, so.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
I do not think it's going to take until December 31 of 2025 to spend that money.
We've well exceeded the grant of the $500,000 that we received, so.
Well, we do appreciate the fact that there are extra monies out there, because as already indicated, it is, it's going to be a savings for the taxpayers of Center County.
Definitely.
Because elections are not cheap.
Not anymore.
And Beth, are we still potentially looking for a few more people to help out during the general election this fall?
Right now, I think we have the staffing. It all depends on what things start to look like in August and September. I anticipate them being much busier than they were for the past, the primary election. But the staff did great and had things done earlier. And we really didn't need the extra staff that we hired for this election. So hopefully, that'll get us through the fall.
So now we have some experienced folks who've been through this for a cycle.
Exactly.
I know other counties are kind of hurting in that area. So great to hear that we're doing okay. Did you have a question, Gary?
Is this what the grant wanted primarily is for, the staffing?
This grant here is for securities. So we can use it for any computer-related things that we may need. We could use it for additional education for voters. So there's limits on what this could be used for. However, that'll just free up monies that we would spend somewhere else.
So this is available for all counties?
Yes, all counties are getting, the minimum, I believe, was $3,000 that they were awarding.
Some might, I'm just asking, some might say with the suit filed and the challenge of primary, that Center County is doing this especially, this is something being done in all counties? Or it's available in all counties?
Correct, it's available to all counties.
Is there anything that was raised in the civil suit issues or whatever that they're going to, you'll take a look at in terms of heading on the November?
That will be something that the board will have to discuss in the future.
Does the election board still plan to meet this afternoon to finalize?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Two o'clock.
Thank you.
Thanks. Great, thank, oh, so I think we can take a motion.
I will move to approve the acceptance of the 2024 Election Security Grant Program.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the acceptance of the 2024 Election Security Grant Program. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thank you very much, Beth. All right, now talking about computers and security, we have Chad from our Information Technology Services.
Good morning. I have a contract consideration this morning with Zoho Corporation to provide a manage engine firewall analyzer. This will help enhance the alerts we currently get with our firewall and enhance the ability to help us find vulnerabilities and get those patched quickly as well. So his contract total is $4,633.
Great, thanks for bringing that forward, Chad. Obviously, we unfortunately have to have all sorts of security devices in place to keep the people who want to do nefarious things with the county funds and other items out. Commissioner Concepcion, any questions?
No, thanks for keeping on top of all these.
Commissioner Dershowitz?
No, thank you very much. I was just listening to a program yesterday. They were talking about Microsoft coming out with some AI program that's supposed to, yeah, so it's a snapshot, like all your screens that you've done for months and months and months. And I'm thinking, we've got to figure out how to opt out of that, because that would be a very dangerous thing to, in our organization, to have somebody, you know.
It's a privacy concern.
Yeah.
And where are we going to put all those screenshots?
Well, I don't know, but apparently, Microsoft is working on it. We need to be aware of it, so.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
All right, sounds like Chad's aware. Very good. All right, unless there's any other questions, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to add the contract with Zoho Corporation to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the contract with Zoho Corporation to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thank you, Chad. And now Julia has multiple different contracts for our human service agencies. Looks like she's grabbing notes.
I got to fly after this. So the first is for adult services. It's to consider approval of the Statement of Work with Language Line Services Incorporated to provide qualified and trained interpreters for phone interpreting services to facilitate effective communication between staff and individuals with limited English proficiency. I think each of the human service agencies has a contract with Language Line. The estimated total is $1,500.
Any questions from any of the commissioners? Will you take a motion?
I'll move to add the Statement of Work with Language Line Services to next week's consent agenda.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to add the Statement of Work with Language Line Services, Inc. to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. And now you have, I think, a couple of items for children and youth.
Yeah, so the first is a memorandum of understanding with the Youth Service Bureau. And this is essentially so that when children are in the care and custody of either children in youth services or juvenile probation, that those departments will assume the shelter costs for any children staying at Borough Street Youth Haven. Because it is federally funded, they need those assurances that those departments will pay for anybody staying at that shelter.
All right. And it looks like we need a separate motion for this one. Any questions?
I'll move to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Center County Youth Service Bureau.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Center County Youth Service Bureau. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. And now four contracts for youth.
Yes, so the first is with Junata Valley YMCA to provide childcare services for children in foster care. The contract total is $5,000, with the state share being $4,000 and the county share being $1,000. The next is a contract renewal with Hope's Haven Residential Services to provide foster care residential services for dependent and delinquent youth. The contract total is $265,000, with the county share being $53,000. The next is also a contract renewal. This one's with Cornell Abraxas Group to provide foster care residential services to dependent and delinquent youth. That contract total is $85,000, with the county share being $17,000. And finally, the contract renewal with Presley Ridge to provide foster care residential services to dependent and delinquent youth. Contract total is $60,000, with the county share being $12,000.
Great, thanks, Julia. Questions from other commissioners?
I'll move to add the Children and Youth Services Items 1, or I'm sorry, 2 through 5 to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the four items for Children and Youth Services to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Julia.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. All right, we have a medium-sized to longer consent agenda.
I'll move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries.
Oh.
Yeah.
It's called Microsoft Recall.
A recall.
It screenshots every five seconds.
Ouch, really going to put all that stuff?
All I can tell you is it's deadly scary from a privacy standpoint. And if somebody would gain access to that. Anyways, just to bring it, and it's going to be pretty much standard.
And from an intellectual property standpoint, too, perhaps.
Yeah, not to mention. So anyways, just put that on your radar, things to be concerned about.
All right. Moving on then to a letter of support. We're looking to consider a letter of support for a Norwegian manufacturer to potentially move a high-tech manufacturing facility to Center County. John, if you could give us a brief overview?
Sure. Good morning, commissioners. Before you, for consideration, is a letter of support for the relocation of G&amp;T Septech's Norwegian manufacturing facility. They manufacture miniaturized, high-performance liquid chromatography columns. I'm not well-versed in chromatography, but some of the things that you can do with chromatography, it's an analysis tool. And fields of application would include forensic science, food and beverage quality testing, water and air sampling, testing, molecular biology, and pharmaceutical R&amp;D are some of the practices that you can apply chromatography analysis to. So they are, we are considered a sort of a hub for this type of work. And for a Norwegian company to be interested in moving their manufacturing here says something to that effect. Part of this process includes an L1 visa issuance for Dr. Roger Trones, who is the lead for this company. So before you, for consideration, is that letter of support.
And I believe between Restech and what was the company you're following?
Sapekko, which is now Milloport Sigma.
Okay, so between Milloport Sigma, Restech, and a variety of other smaller companies, Center County is a worldwide hub for chromatography, to the point where we now have a Norwegian company looking to move its operations here.
And again, how many employees are we looking at at this stage?
They did not specify.
I think it starts with a half dozen, moves up to a dozen. But all highly-paid, very technical-type jobs.
I would assume, okay.
Hopefully hire some Penn State grads pretty quick on that. All right. Unless there's any other questions, take a motion.
I'll move to approve the letter of support for G&amp;T Septech LLC.
We have a motion and a second to approve the letter of support for G&amp;T Septech LLC. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Question, Gary?
Those were your last week, and you said you have a argument about hiring a firm to do negotiations with Penn State on the INLU, is that right? Am I reading that right?
Is that one on there, or was that a prior meeting?
I believe that was a prior meeting. We've, the county has an ongoing arrangement with Susquehanna Accounting. They've assisted us in the past when we were without a finance director. And we've had them come on board to help us with some financial analysis prior to entering into negotiations with Penn State on a potential new contract for the fee in lieu.
Does the current agreement expire with Penn State then?
End of this year.
Will this firm be working just for the county or the other entities involved in that?
All of the entities involved in that agreement with Penn State, yes.
Do you have ballpark with the current figures Penn State pays? I know it's well over a million, but.
Not collectively.
Yeah, it's hard to track. Some of it is cash, some of it goes to the school district, some of it is in-kind funds. I believe college township opted out in exchange for a
Impact fee.
Impact fee on tickets sold at the Bryce Jordan Center. So it's extremely varied.
The county is looking to renew that agreement, though?
Well, it has to be renewed. Roughly every 10 years?
I think the last term was 20.
20.
Oh, wow.
Yes. So it's just, it's up at the end of this year. And so we're working with the remaining municipalities in the center region that have, in some cases, very significant amounts of Penn State property and buildings and impact in their area.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Moving on to authorities, boards, and commissions, we would like to thank three people for agreeing to be appointed. We have Jonathan Risley to the Local Emergency Planning Council Board. Those don't necessarily have a fixed term. And then two appointees for the RSVP Advisory Council. I believe it once stood for Retired Senior Volunteer Program. I think we're just using the acronym now. Some of them aren't retired. And we have Sherry Lonsdale and William Smith. And their terms will be from May 28 of this year to May 27 of 2026. We take a motion to approve those ABC appointments. We take a motion to approve those ABC appointments.
I will move to approve these ABC appointments.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ABC appointments. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. And then Commissioner Concepcion will cover the check run.
Okay. The check that I'd like to recognize today on the check run is to Strawberry Fields, one of the larger checks in our check run. Strawberry Fields is a really critical partner to our Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities Department. And with that, I would move to approve the check run dated May 24th, 2024.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated May 24th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose nay. Motion carries. Is there administrative report at this time, John?
Nothing to report at this time.
Okay. Then we bounce back to voter registration with Commissioner Concepcion.
So today on our voter registration report, we have 101,381 registered voters in Center County.